And I believe that so much of that really threads through our district goals for the year, which preceded that presentation ironically. And really what it means to start a school year. Because teachers are connecting with their students and leaders are connecting with their teachers and we're connecting with families. So, the beginning of the school year on a good year is very incredibly anxiety ridden. And you know, teachers are notoriously type A personalities where we lay out our clothes the night before and pack our lunches the night before, part of us because we get up so early. But just because we're those kinds of prepared type people. So, the uncertainty of a new school year always brings trepidation and anxiety and sleepless nights. But to have a new school year where you are coming in masked, the threat of Delta looming, legislation changing all of the time, a new superintendent, new principals in two of our buildings, new people in positions, new vice principal in one of the buildings, and then you're hit with the hurricane. So, just wow. Just wow, because I don't know how, you know, we just keep, we just keep going. Just keep going one day at a time. But I'll tell you a little bit about myself for those of you who don't know my background. My background is a teacher of English. Reading, writing, and libraries is an area that I supervised after I was teaching. I was a director of curriculum instruction and then assistant superintendent here from 2010 to 2018. And I very much loved the time that I spent here. I left to become a superintendent in another district during that time. I was faced with a traumatic health crisis. I'm much better now. I'm all better now. And got through the pandemic. And it was a very trying time for any superintendent. And I feel that it really, all of that together has really grounded me, made me focus on, and I hope, focus on the things that are truly important, like the lives of people, the lives of our students, and care and protection of our teachers, and care and protection of myself. And it has helped me to have a much better outlook, I think, on life and the things that are thrown at us. I have been married for 25 years to a wonderful man. I have two daughters. One is in college. She's a junior at Syracuse. The other is going into eighth grade. She's an amazing little basketball player, among other things. And I have a little cockapoo, Bailey. So, I'm back now and I feel incredibly well-prepared to assume this role and to serve this community and keep moving it forward with the same spirit of growth and innovation that we moved it forward in the time, the eight years that I spent here working with Michael. So, I do consider myself a servant leader. I don't necessarily think that that's behavior as much as it is belief, but it is a combination. Servant leaders leave their constituency wiser, freer, more autonomous, and more likely to serve others at the end. And so, my goal and my vision for leadership is really with the board to be at the bottom. Very often organizational charts look like this. I envision mine looking like this. And the board is beneath me, holding me up, let's hope. And I'm responsible for pushing everybody else up. And that's how I see my role. And I take that chart very seriously. As part of my commitment to the growth of the students is also a commitment to the growth of the faculty and staff and my leadership team. There's plenty of research out there to suggest that students who work, who are, who learn from teachers, who are immersed in their own personal and professional growth, grow faster than students whose teachers do not. So, it's very important for our teachers to always feel like the professional development that they receive and the support that they receive helps them to grow. Because when they feel that, their students will grow. So, I'm equally committed to the growth of the faculty and staff. And the same is said for leaders. Leaders who are immersed in growth have teachers who grow stronger and faster than when their leaders do not. So, before I left here in 2018, I worked with Ms. O'Docta and Dr. Prisamalas on the teacher leadership cadre. It was a really important initiative that we started. We had teachers apply who were interested, and we had about a dozen. And we worked together for a solid year. And it didn't have to be teachers who were interested in becoming, let's say, leaders in the form of like a principal, but teachers who were naturally revered as leaders among their peers and whom we thought had leadership capacity, maybe they didn't see it in themselves. And it was some of the richest professional and personal work I did. It was incredibly reflective. We worked together very collaboratively. We took all of our titles and, you know, our roles aside, and we worked and we grew as people. Now that we have Dr. Prisamalas in the role that she's doing, she will be working with us to work with their administrative team first and then to work again in another group of teachers in the teacher cadre. And she'll be working with a variety of different groups, including student groups. So, I'm really excited that that is continuing because I think it's very valuable work. And I look forward to learning alongside them because we are always learning. I told the teachers that I would hope that they would feel very much supported in their work and that I want them to know how much I respect the work that they do because they are the unsung heroes very often. I try to make myself, it's a little difficult sometimes because of the nature of my work. I try to make myself available to people who have, you know, questions and concerns. My first, I first, I know I spread, don't worry.
No, no.
Sorry.
Don't worry about it.
My door is always open to students. I will drop absolutely anything if there's a student at my door. Everybody else needs an appointment, only because I couldn't possibly run my office that way. I try as much as I can. I always call parents back. I always respond to parent emails. I've gotten a few so far this year. I always respond. And I just want the public to know that it's very important that if you have questions or concerns or things that are unsettling to you, that you have a whole network of people here who are here to help you. You have counselors and teachers and vice principals and principals and supervisors and Lauren and Carrie and me. And I ask that you use that network of people because we are here to serve this community. That is our job. And that is my expectation of my team, that we serve this community. I realize that there's a social media presence out there and there's a lot of, you know, this that goes on on social media. Unfortunately, that's not the way to get questions answered because I don't, you know, peruse that stuff. But if you call me or you reach out to me, I'm happy to answer your questions or, you know, clear up anything that may be out of there, that may be out there that you don't think sounds kosher. Learning. So, we've approved a director of constructivist learning, right? And I think some people might question, what even is that, right? And before I worked with Carrie and before I came here, I believed and I value constructivism. And I believe all of you do too. You may just not even realize it. And constructivism is when you meet the child where they are or the adult where they are. You get an understanding for what they know and you help them to build off of that, what they already know, to make the learning bigger. It also involves a student inquiry component and a kinesthetic whole-body learning component, all of which science tells us is good and right for children and works, right? And I am very much invested in constructivist learning. And I think that this district, prior to my arrival, I had to give Michael credit for having the vision that he does to see that this is what we could benefit from. Keep in mind that some other districts have lots of supervisors. We don't have supervisors. We have a math coach, right? And we don't have supervisors. So, this is a person that really has a wealth of knowledge and foundation, very well-respected in the district and by her team to help work with the leadership team to help us teach our students better. So, I'm really excited about that. This year, I think that going slow is always important, especially considering the fact that we are facing a lot of issues right now between pandemic, between changes in legislation, and then community issues with the hurricane. So, my priorities are, and I believe as they should be, the safety of the buildings, the health and wellness of our students and our staff, the social and emotional well-being of our students and our staff. Of course, the district goals, which I think are fair and were well-established for this particular year. Capacity building of our teachers and our leadership team. Accessing equity for all students, which is always the never-ending goal. And increased communication, which I hope to be part of. Learning and leading alongside everyone and getting myself reacclimated to new programs and changes that have occurred in the time that I was gone. And then assessing along the way to determine where we're headed. I love new ideas and I hope people bring them to us. I'm really excited about the ideas that the teachers bring and the ideas that the students bring. I like to be able to say yes. We do our very best to try to find a way to say yes. I remember a former mentor of mine, who was, who used to be a superintendent, once said, "If it includes water and snow, the answer's no." That's what he taught us in grad school. "If it includes water and snow, the answer's no." And I thought, "That's a smart guy." And then I met Michael Woodsey. And he would say, "Why can't they go to China?" I was like, "They couldn't go to Mount Airy Lodge." When I was in that other class, "You want them to go to China?" We found a way to say yes, and I'm very much invested in trying to find a way to continue to say yes. I spoke with Michelle Harrell today about the academies. And she said, "I would love it if we could plan a spring college tour." And I said, "I hope that we can say yes to that." So, I remind you, because I think sometimes people forget, I'm human. I make mistakes. Sometimes I don't know the answer. I'll do my best to get you the answer and as quickly as possible. And when I make mistakes, I will apologize as publicly as I made the mistake is as publicly as I will apologize. And I believe I've learned a lot in my three years as superintendent and I feel like I'm very ready. And if I don't know where we need to go or where we should be, I trust that somebody will tell me. So, I don't really like to hear people tell me what I want to hear. That doesn't help us grow, right? And the last thing that I shared with the team on Wednesday was about my favorite, one of my favorite movies is Working Girl. So, some people are a little bit older than you. They may know Working Girl. Melanie Griffith, and you know, she was trying to make her way in the world as a professional. And she had a lot of bosses take advantage of her. And then, you know, finally, by the end of the movie, I'm going to ruin the ending for you. Finally, by the end of the movie, you know, she gets the guy, she gets the job, and all goes well. And when she gets to her job, she takes a seat that she thinks is hers in a cute little cubicle. And she comes to realize that it's not her seat. It's actually the seat of her assistant. We called her secretary at the time. The seat of her assistant. Her assistant says to her, "What are you doing in my chair?" And she said, "Oh, I didn't know. I thought this was my chair." And her assistant said, "No, your office isn't there." And it was a big, beautiful office with a view of the New York City skyline. And she was just shocked she had finally made it. And her assistant said, "Well, what are your expectations for me?" And Melanie Griffith said, "Well, first, call me Tess," because that's her name. So, I go by Danielle. I'm on a first-name basis. I'm very much into this kind of a person. So, I'm not into really, into formalities. And then she said, "You don't have to fetch a coffee, a cup of coffee for me unless you're getting one for yourself." So, I say to everyone, "I don't expect you to do anything that I wouldn't expect from myself." And the third thing is, she goes, "How about we just make it up as we go?" And since I'm here all of three whole days, I'm still sticking to that. Let's just make it up as we go. I do have as part of my report, if you wouldn't mind indulging me, first of all, it's a little hot in here.
Yes. So, we have to turn that one AC off so that the mic picks up our sound. Sorry.
Anyone gonna just, tell me that? I would have worn my.
Although you're always hot.
Okay. So, okay. In my letter, I just want to remind some people a few things. The reopening plan, if you haven't read it and it's on the agenda tonight for approval again, is a live document. It's only a live document because our lovely governor keeps changing things or else it would be a final PDF. But anytime there are changes that are made at the state level, we update the document, okay? So, it was linked in my letter and it's on our website. If you haven't reviewed it, you might want to do that. The community can review that too. The most recent updates are in the document. I wanted to remind everyone that we are serving lunch for the first time tomorrow. Your children are going to come home and they're going to say, "It was so slow. Things were so crazy. I didn't get what I want." It's going to be, it's going to be worse before it gets better. We ask you to please be patient. Keep in mind that since this is a free lunch and a lot of students will be accessing free lunch who don't normally get free lunch, and we're not sure what that number is going to be. So, we need to be prepared to give a lunch to every student in the building. And it's going to take some time for us to get used to the numbers. So, please bear with us, okay? Lauren is not here, but she will be sending out a memo to the families about the meetings that we will be having, the family meetings we'll be having with CARE+. So, CARE+ will be hosting a meeting once a month for our families in the community. It will be virtual. And they will focus on, you know, helping parents and caregivers support the emotional well-being of students at home. And that is part of our partnership with CARE+. Another thing I'd like to share with you. So, as a result of the hurricane, we had a lot of, a lot of water. Fast, strong, running, river-like water behind us. It wasn't sitting water. And that fast water caused a lot of damage. Very fortunately, and I shared with the board yesterday, some of the great news is that our insurance coverage is apparently covering everything that was damaged and, which is great. And we are looking at some potential options, maybe for doing things better. For example, the snack shack. Maybe we don't replace it with a stationary snack shack. We would like to have a meeting with the facilities and finance committee and talk about options for maybe a portable snack shack or something like that that can be used at different schools, for example. Those things will come at a later time. So, that is all good news. Good news that comes from that. I also wanted to share with you, for those who may not know, and for those of you in the public, because this gentleman was a very big part of our community. Mr. Walter Peveney, known as Big Pev, the father of Mr. Peveney here, passed this week. He was a great member of our community. He had two sons who were teachers in the community, established a scholarship in one of his son's names. And he did pass this week. So, our thoughts go to the entire and the Peveney family. Our love and prayers to them. And thanks to Mr. Peveney for just being a wonderful family member of this community. We do have a few COVID cases already. Let's hope that that number does not keep climbing. Close contact is now defined as within three feet and without a mask at one point. So, the distance for close contact is getting a little bit tighter. And you may find that these children's parents get called for quarantine, but this child's parent doesn't get called in the same classroom. That may happen. So, we are following the guidelines. And we are hoping that everybody who can get a vaccine does get a vaccine. And I'll be working with the county to try to establish some vaccine clinics here on site throughout the year so that if children turn 12 and parents want to get them vaccinated, maybe we can help to facilitate that. In reference to that, some of you may have heard that the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and the Center for Disease Control Prevention awarded $267 million to the New Jersey Department of Health to provide COVID-19 screening, testing resources, and support to the local educational agencies. And that's what we are in L.E.H. So, I am waiting for some feedback from our attorney to discuss with the board which of the choices we can pick and how we could go about accessing the portion of the money that we could receive to help either test teachers and students. I don't know what that would look like, perfectly honest with you. Don't freak out on me yet. That's just what it says. On campus, maybe an outside agency, or to reimburse people who are getting tested in an approved facility. We're not exactly sure yet which option we're going to choose. Like I said, I need to consult with the attorney. We need to have an answer to the state by September 13th. So, that'll get, we'll do that relatively quickly. Okay. Another thing I wanted to share with you. On September 8th, they love to do these things, like right in the middle of life. Okay. The State Board of Education adopted a graduation assessment requirement for the classes of 2023, 24, and 25. Because they have nothing better to do. So, they're worried about graduation, not for the class of 2022. That they're, what they had in place is still in place. But for 23, 24, and 25, the new regulations comply with the original statute. So, students in the class, in those classes, will take the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment in grade 11. That assessment will be aligned to New Jersey learning standards for grades 10, ELA, and Algebra I and Geometry. So, they're testing them in grade 11 for what they learned or should have learned in grades 9 and 10. The assessment format will be similar to what the students already know because it's going to look like the New Jersey SLA assessment. And that's all I'm going to share with you for right now because I know that Ms. O'Docta will follow up on assessments at another time. But that just came through, so I wanted to share. Something else that is on our agenda tonight, I believe, is an update to the calendar. So, we have an update to the calendar because we are going to take off. We are going to, for the 21, 22 school year, we will have off on June 17th or Juneteenth. We'll be closed that day. So, we needed to recoup one day. So, we will recoup what we affectionately call Easter Monday, April 18th, the Monday after Easter. Now, we have three emergency closing days built into the calendar. So, what I would like to do is I can assess around March 28th, which is like the last Monday in March. If we still have three emergency closing days on March 28th, then I will give back Easter Monday. That's what I think we should do. Now, if I don't have three, then I get nervous because you, it doesn't have to be a snow event. We have a lot of flooding, so I don't, I get, you know, I get nervous about that. But if we have three on March 28th, then I'll give back spring break, Easter Monday, and we will make that a blackout date in our calendar. My last piece, I'm sorry. I have asked, everybody's going to make fun of me now. I have asked the principals to give me, for the meetings, good news. So, I create a template and they fill in some good news for me so I can share what's going on in all the buildings. So, I'd like to share some things with you. At the elementary school, we're very excited to have welcomed back all of our students. First two days were a huge success and the classrooms were filled with excitement, discovery, and curiosity. All the students have gotten to know their teachers already and their classmates and have reacquainted themselves with their school buildings. The best compliment came from a kindergarten student. And when asked if she had the first, a good first day of school, she replied, "No. I had a great first day." And when asked if she was excited to come back tomorrow, she replied, "Yes. I'm very excited to come back. I just love school. It's amazing." Doesn't get any better than that. David Owens. "Middle school is excited to have everyone back in the building and we went through our first two days reviewing lunch procedures." See how everything changes when you get to the middle school? Now, it's lunch procedures. "Navigating classroom changes and we're happy to say that all of our students appear to be excited and happy to be back. It's a joy and an honor to grow with them each day." We're also very proud of Alexandra Albanese, who placed sixth in the nation in the Invest Right Essay Contest that Mrs. Daley does in class with her students every year. On August 26th, Mrs. Daley and Ms. Catalano took time out of their summer break to surprise Ally at her home with the fantastic news. She was truly surprised and extremely happy that she came in sixth place out of approximately 4,000 entries. So, congratulations, Alexandra. I hope her parents are watching. At the high school, congratulations to Emma Conforti and Brianna Kurtz. Both Emma and Brianna applied for and were accepted into a writing program entitled Dispatches, Young Writers on American Life, a project created and implemented by author Alexandra Zapruder. I have read her books. "In partnership with Educators Institute on Human Rights in Washington, D.C., we're so proud of them and their decision over 12 weeks during this past dedication, over 12 weeks during this past summer. They represented New Milford in the best possible light. Congrats to them." And a special thanks to Mrs. Tambucio for all her support in this program. Nice job, right? Alina Devian, well, I hope I'm saying that correctly, Devian, Devian, will be representing New Milford High School as a student representative to the Tyler Clemente Foundation. The Tyler Clemente Foundation was funded by the Clemente family to prevent bullying through inclusion and the assertion of dignity and acceptance as a way to honor the memory of Tyler, a son, a brother, and a friend. Our mission is to end online and offline bullying in schools, workplaces, and faith communities. As a school district that proudly supports diversity and inclusion, we are proud to celebrate Alina and this important role. Okay, so a little bit on athletics. First, I would like to just let you know that the football field will be ready for football this month. We have the Zamboni coming soon to redistribute pellets and we're in good shape. And the practice field right behind the board offices is ready to play on now. Senior night, however, will be rescheduled after the field is officially clear for action. So, senior night was supposed to be this Thursday. Today. I was like, "It's Thursday." It is Thursday, but it's not. Okay. And the fall season begins today officially with boys soccer at Bergen Charter and volleyball hosting Lynnhurst at 4:00 P.M. Football kicks off tomorrow, tomorrow night at Woodbridge at 7:00 P.M. And the remainder of our teams start next week. I will be launching a Facebook page for the district. And when I do, I will send you a message and you will know. And when I do, I'll send you a message and you will know. And I'm, I'm done. That concludes my report.
That was a lot.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. All right. And you gave us something.
I'm sorry.
You gave.
I'm taking my, my jacket off.
Go for it. You gave us something for Lauren O'Doxta, nothing else for her, right?
No.
I'm checking.
Well, she'll get you next time.
Did I skip over her?
That's fine.
Because I tend to skip over Mrs. Kuchar.
Do you have a question?
It's Mrs. Kuchar. But you have a question, Ms. Mike?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much.
You're still welcome. I know it's a lot.
For all of that. So I just, I wrote down everything I can remember. For the lunches, right? So it's the first time. Is there some sort of instruction for families? My kids are in high school. I don't care. They get their lunch, they don't get their lunch, whatever. But the younger ones, is there an instruction to families to say, this is how it's going to work? We're going to go to the room, we're going to give them. Like, is there any way to give them?
I think.
Comptonian, to give them a little insight?
I think it's happening in the classroom with the teachers and the students. Because, for example, if your classroom is eating in the classroom this week, this month, that, that direction is going to be different than what's happening down the hallway. So I think they're, they're working on it on a classroom-by-classroom basis. I am, I am not, I mean, they're basically going through and choosing.
I think that's what it is. Just if there would be a way that either the principals could send something or the teachers could send something. Because as a parent, when, thinking, putting myself in that spot as an elementary parent, like, my children would go in and I trust them to be honest and trustworthy kids, but they don't always tell me everything the right way that I have been. So, you know, maybe they didn't want something, so they, instead of telling me they didn't want it, they say, "Then give it to me." You know, or maybe they don't know what to do because they're little and they're afraid to, I don't know. It's just, I don't know if there's something to just put parents' minds at ease so they understand because I think we're doing a great thing with the free, you know, being able to continue to support that with the free lunches. And some people are just going to let it go and, you know.
Well, I can't promise anything for tomorrow, obviously. But I do have a leadership team meeting tomorrow. And so I will talk about it. I'll add it to my agenda. And then I'll say, what can we do to give parents more information about the lunch outward? Goings on, yeah, how it works.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
And then you answered a couple of things. I was writing it down and you said that. So the money, the $267, $267 million awarded to New Jersey. So the thought is we're going to, we have to come up with something by the end of this month and basically say how we're going to support testing.
Danielle, you have a question, but Danielle, can I?
Yeah.
She wants to add to your lunch.
Yes, yes.
Sorry, move on.
So historically, they would be paper choices sent home. And so lunch wasn't always started on the first day because elementary school parents would have to pick.
A week ahead.
Select it, a week ahead. So that will start next week. So we have prepared for tomorrow, it's the first day, that the lunch, if a student wants it, it'll, they'll be eligible. They can have it into next week. And then next week, the forms will go out.
There we go.
Parents will be able to select.
There we go. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So you said about the testing. I'm good with that. The calendar.
Yeah.
Just at the very bottom.
Yep.
It says, if the district exceeds four snow days, and I know we just have three.
It's three.
So we can just fix the title.
Mine says three.
The one here. I pushed it out. Maybe it fixed since it was.
Oh, okay.
There are a few different versions.
All right.
I guess just make sure.
Yep, I will make sure. Okay, that was just the question there.
The question for those.
Yeah.
And then the, the last thing was, and you brought it up too, about the Facebook page and some of the things you're putting in these good news things. In recognizing students, we've done it before, but in now, it's a little challenging because usually when we would recognize students, all their parents and everyone would come.
Right.
It would be crowded. So would there be a thought to maybe have student recognition at a specific meeting and then we would do it in the auditorium, maybe? Like, because you mentioned a whole bunch of students. I think it's fabulous. And, you know, maybe there's a, it's more of a question of, it's more of a question of that, of recognition of students. Because we always enjoyed that. And now that we're back in person, I'd like to see that.
I think we'll be slowly bringing students back in. I think it will be slow.
Yeah.
The, it's bringing all their parents in. No offense to the parents. It's just bringing all these extra bodies in. And then it's extra contact tracing. And that's really the issue. So if one person in that auditorium, then we're contact tracing the people in the auditorium. You really can't contact trace unless you have a list of everybody who's there and contact information. So we're trying to keep visitors out. Now, here, this is legislated.
Yes.
By law, we have to have public meetings, right? So we have to allow it. But to invite it in yet, when we don't know, you know, what's going on with Delta and everything. But yeah, I mean, obviously, we want to get back to whatever kind of normalcy we can have.
Yeah.
You know, and in the meantime, we can celebrate students as long as we have permissions digitally, in letters, in, you know, so that it's more public than just, I said it here, you know?
And then one last question, which you didn't touch on it. I don't know if we will touch on it, which is, as we've gone back in, there have been some questions regarding, so you had said, like, you know, there's a, it's right to three feet, right? So that's all different. And it's all in the road back, right?
Yeah.
But in each individual classroom, things might be being done a little, little differently in terms of how
Well, they take breaks.
Or how they are in a group. So what would you, I, like, what has been brought up to me, I've said, you know, reach out to the teacher, reach out to the principal, find out what's going on in your classroom.
So what happens, so one of the things that's on my list, and I did communicate with the principals today to remind their teachers, seating charts, we use seating charts last year. We really have to use seating charts so that we can keep track of who's sitting where per, per class, as we can remember. Especially if you're at the middle high school and your class is changing every period. But at the elementary level, it's a little bit, yes, they, that's easy to seating chart because they all have their desk with their name. But then you pull them into a small group or you have them working in homogeneous groupings for something or a reading group. So it would then be up to the classroom teacher to identify, help us identify who the students are. And if we're not sure, because they think they might be, we have to err on the side of caution.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe, you had a question?
Well, as usual, you wiped out my list.
I'm sorry.
Pretty much everything.
I'm sorry.
It slipped out of how thorough you were. Now, you said Lauren is going to let us know about testing? If there's going to be testing in the spring?
Oh, we're going, there's going to be testing. There will actually be testing in October.
Okay.
Because the state is requiring us to. But as far as any changes to graduation requirements and when tests will be administered in the spring for next year's graduation, Lauren, that's her domain. So I'll let her follow up. I was just giving you that information and she could follow up another time.
I was just curious. And basically, you wiped out my list and I was there.
I'm glad.
Good enough. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I lost my place for a second.
Sorry about that.
All right, are there any other questions or comments from the board for Ms. Shelly?
I just want to say, welcome back.
Thank you.
This is your first meeting. It is great to have you.
It's great to meet you.
And that was a wonderful, informative report. So thank you.
Thank you.
Love the communication.
Okay. I will now hand it over to the poor lady there who's wearing multiple hats, taking the.
Typing feverishly.
Typing feverishly, but now has to give her report. Do you have a report pressed back to Kuchar?
I do.
Okay.
I wanted to start tonight with the flood of last week. On Thursday, September 2nd, we met with the insurance broker to begin the claim process. Everything has been filed. We already had the vehicle insurance come out. We, on the two vehicles, one is a 2006 Chevy school bus that has been decommissioned. It was decommissioned at our August meeting. And as well as the grounds dump truck. Both have been claimed as a total loss at this point. They're, they're a total loss. So I'll have the numbers in the coming days and I will share with you then. The main field has been assessed and there was no silt left on the field. Our ground, our ground staff has been blowing off the fields. And the next step will be to schedule the vendor to come in and redistribute the infill. The vendor was on-site on September 8th and certified that the field is safe to be on once the infill is redistributed as no bacteria was present. The small field just needs the infill to be redistributed. Both fields will be done at the same time. As I indicated before, we've identified four pieces of damaged vehicles. So it was the dump truck, the bus, a ride-on tractor and mower, as well as several grounds equipment. We have flood insurance on all of the equipment, as well as the snack shaft, the fencing. We've had some damage there. That's also covered. And we also started a claim with FEMA. So there should be no laps in coverage. I would like to thank the town for their continued partnership and support. They were, allowed us to borrow their equipment so we could prepare the buildings for opening day. So that was a really huge help. Our, we had all our staff cutting grass, blowing leaves, getting the buildings prepared to welcome students back. The town has also allowed us to use their field so that our sports teams could continue practicing. I now want to just pivot to lunch. Two points on the lunches. One is exciting news, that there was some interest from the preschool parents. The district previously did not serve lunch to our youngest learners in the preschool program because they're housed at the middle school. It's obviously a different lunch menu and complicates the service. I spoke with Comptonian and we have a target date of the end of September, the first week in October. After the dietitian establishes a menu, we will be introducing lunches to our youngest learners. It'll obviously be free for them as well. It's free for all students. And I just wanted to reiterate the importance of completing the lunch application. Although the Department of Agriculture has extended free lunch for all students, it is imperative that families fill out the form because we have funding directly tied to those applications. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you. And if I could just please, I'd like to thank Stephanie Kuchar, Brian Piero, and the entire staff, our custodial, ground staff. I was, I hadn't personally met Brian. I was here one day. So I just didn't run into him that one day. And at about 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock, I said, Stephanie, maybe you should give me Brian's cell phone number. I had a feeling this is going to go bad. And so Brian and I were communicating at night. And he said, well, I'm here, I'm, I'm on, I'm on the grounds, I'm watching. You know, up until, and then again at 4:00, 5:00 in the morning. And Joe Riccadelli couldn't have done it without all of them watching. A keen observation, I think, is the fact that we did not get water in this building. Now, I was here when we did get water in this building another time. And the water, the storm was not as bad as Ida. So whatever drainage and/or grading was done to the field behind my office and the, underneath the football turf field definitely had an impact on how much water made its way to the building. So that's, that was a tremendous bonus. Otherwise, that water would have all been in the building. But I just want to thank them for, you know, doing their work and being here when it was pretty dangerous. She sent me pictures and I said, are you in a boat? How, how are you taking those pictures? I was just really incredible and frightening. I'm frightened. So thank you.
And you also mentioned thanking the town.
Yes.
Our entire community was incredible. The PTO, all of the PTOs, the town council, and parents who came together to help everyone. It's really an incredible community we live in.
Yeah.
Great partnerships. And Heather, now, I guess, did you want to say something?
I did. Now is probably the time. Perfect. As someone who was affected by the storm, I just want to thank the mayor and council, New Milford Police, New Milford Fire Department, Emergency Services, DPW, OEM, and all the volunteers, especially the Girl Scouts, the restaurants and stores who've donated food and items, Emily Tutterell, Maria Demler, the PTO, the Board of Ed, the superintendent, and all the schools for assisting students who needed school supplies. I personally want to thank the Birch Toll family. Sorry. The Parachevics and the Holmes. New Milford is a great town with a big heart that rallies together on behalf of my family and every other family affected by the storm. And I truly want to say thank you for myself and my neighbors. You know, during the pandemic, we made shirts that said, "New Milford Unite", and it's so true. And I hope we make more of those because this town really rallies around people and helps everyone in need. So thank you.
I'm going to give you an air hug. I know you're hot.
It's all the guys.
We actually do have, Lauren said to me, you know, Danielle, we still have those N.M. Heels t-shirts. Do you remember? We were raising money for, I want to say, like, New Orleans, Louisiana?
Yeah.
Where we made these t-shirts, say, N.M. Heels. And we didn't sell them all, so we said, well, we're guaranteed to need them for something. So we pulled them all out and they're in good shape. And so we will still be selling, we'll be selling those. They don't say what you just said. What did you say?
Um, N.M. Unite.
N.M. Unite, that's the logo. So we will be selling the N.M. Heels shirts.
Please make sure you email that to the board members. I'd love to buy one.
Okay.
Okay. I have a quick question and I'm sorry.
No, no, that's down.
Can you just clarify? So the free lunch forms, if I've never needed to fill one out, I don't need to fill it out now. But if I have or may need to fill it out now, like, if I look and I qualify, I should. But otherwise, I don't need to.
That's a good question to ask.
I just want to make, clarify, make sure that's it. Because a lot of kids came home with the, you must fill this out. And it not, it didn't apply to all families.
Got it.
It's the, it's the people who would normally qualify for the free lunch.
So that's what you're saying, correct? Or whose lifestyle, life may have changed as a result of the pandemic and may now qualify and haven't in the past.
Correct. If there's any question as to whether you qualify or not, fill out the form.
Okay.
Like, it's better that we have the form than not have the form. Because you just won't qualify.
Right. There's no harm.
Right. There's no harm in submitting the form. And it truly benefits the district because we have funding directly tied to that.
So when in doubt, fill it out.
Fill it out.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now we move on to board actions. Review of the regular agenda.
Yes, I skipped it, sorry. You know what, I just want to, I'm trying to.
You know this where? Okay.
We get the student rep?
We are. We do on the regular meeting.
Regular meeting. All right. So agenda items for discussion, I think we kind of did, right? Do we have anything else? I would like to open that. Does anyone have something to discuss on the agenda?
It's for the regular agenda.
Am I on the wrong agenda?
For the 23rd.
Yes.
Right.
So is there anything open to the board?
Well, kind of what Mr. Steele just said, I want to say I'm looking forward to the student board rep being able to come. And you know, you've been here a long time, when the student board rep is the same age as your youngest child.
Speaking of which, I ran into our former student board work at her place of employment. And it was so great to see her and she's doing well, she's working, she's learning. It was right before college started. So she was looking forward to starting.
Yeah, she's doing great.
So looking forward to having Mackenzie here at the next meeting. And then now, which I almost skipped, open to the public for items on the agenda. As outlined in the Milford Board of Education by Law 0167, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to two minutes. May I get a motion? Motion by Laura O'Grady, seconded by Nicole Dunn. All in favor? I oppose. Motion passes eight zero, I have the count. Okay. Does anyone have any, anyone from the public have anything for the agenda? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Little Page, 136, point now. I also have a question about P A seven, the revised calendar. The calendar that I have also does have four snow days on the bottom. But my question is that it says if we exceed four snow days and the additional snow days will be fully remote if permitted by the NJDOE. I thought that Michael had said at a previous meeting that they would be remote, that it was permitted. So I'm just curious, now are we not sure if remote days are going to be?
It is not my understanding that remote days are, mine doesn't say that. So I think there's. It's my understanding that on an individual snow day, an individual snow day, you cannot go remote. If the snow, if the emergency day, we're going to call them emergency days because they're not really snow days. Emergency days exceeds three, you can request permission. So like for example, Cresskill, that's underwater, they're going remote for the whole month of September. For example. So it's my understanding, based on the legislation, that you need to have three together for them to be remote.
You mean three in a row?
Not an isolated single day. That is my understanding.
I thought that it was.
If permitted. You see how it says here, if permitted.
Yes, that's the reason I questioned it because I was under the impression that districts were allowed to call a snow day as a remote day. It happened, this not in New Milford, but it happened in other districts this year, that they didn't close for a snow day.
Are you talking about last week?
No.
Last year? You're saying this year. No, last year it was allowed. Last year, anybody could have a remote day all year. There were schools that never opened.
No, I get that.
Right. But as, but that's, that law sunset, I guess at the end of the summer. Because you could have E S Y remote if it worked for your school and your district. And E S Y is, my understanding, still a continuation of the school year prior. So we are not allowed. I mean, I can look it up and send it to you so you can see it, the change. It's very specific.
Okay. I'm with, explaining that because I understood it differently. I thought there was, had been a discussion at a board meeting previous that snow days were intended to be virtual.
So here's what I'm going to do, Lynn. I'm going to follow up with you tomorrow. I'll get the information, I'll follow up with you tomorrow. If we, if the board does not feel comfortable with this language on the bottom here, we can move this to the next meeting. Because I want to make sure that, you know, we can move this calendar.
I'm comfortable with it because that was what I was informed of also. But I, please follow up with Mrs. Page.
I'm going.
And if there's new findings, we can always adjust it.
Okay.
And as long as the rest of the board agrees.
Okay. Anything else, Lynn? But I'll, I'll follow up.
Thank you. Thank you. Let me put these back on so you don't skip anything else. And these are yours, right?
No, that's yours.
Your spread.
Oh my goodness.
Okay, so wait, we did that, we did that, we did that. So now we're at board action.
No.
Close.
Close.
Each one with the glasses. All right. Motion to close to the public. Motion by Nicole Dunn, seconded by Paige Ryan. All in favor? I oppose.
So can I just make them say, which is that, as a board, when we made that decision, it was prior to the governor ending remote learning and setting the new guidelines, which was that you could only do remote if it was in the case of individuals that were quarantined or if there was a state of emergency declared. So it was true. When we did it, we thought that that would be the case, but then the governor changed the rules.
I think that as a board member, I'm okay with what we're doing here too. Because he might change the rules again. And then we roll with it.
Okay. All right. So now we closed, we did superintendents, we did director, principal, business administrator. Now we can do board action. Back to where my buggie eyes were going. May I seek a motion? Yes, Joe. Oh. I seek a motion to approve B A seven and B A eight. Can I get a second? Seconded by Joe Steele. All in favor? I oppose. Motion passes eight zero. Educational Programs and Curriculum Committee, Mrs. Laura O'Grady.
I seek approval for C five, C six, and C seven.
Second? Seconded by Heather. All in favor? I oppose. Motion passes eight zero. Personnel recommendations. Having the recommendation of the superintendent, I seek a motion for P one fifty-five, P one eighteen, P twenty-eight, P twenty-nine, P thirty-one, P thirty-two, P thirty-three, P thirty-four, P thirty-five, P thirty-six, P thirty-seven, P thirty-eight, P thirty-nine, P forty, P forty-one, P forty-two, P forty-three, and P forty-four. Can I get a second, please? Seconded by Tammy Kaminsky. Any questions or comments? Paige?
So I did get some questions for that on these, for some of the items which are specific to, so I'm just going to repeat what I, some of the things I asked just so that it's aware. For P thirty-six, the question was, are there dates for this particular individual? You had responded to me that this is, my understanding is this was from the pre, this past summer camp. This person was doing that, we're officially approving, so.
And it does say retro for summer 2021 now.
If that's correct.
In red, in red, yes. You might have.
But I'm saying, so that was the one that I had asked about there. And then.
And you asked me about placement of the teachers?
Yes. And then, not, and I agree. So not that we identify a person as being placed in a specific spot because then that means that they can't be in another location. But just for clarification for the.
I can tell you the spots they're filling.
Yes.
So Jennifer Haring replaces Ms. Fleming at Gibbs. Aurelia Howard replacing Ms. Solis at the middle school. Victoria LaPari replaces Mr. Pedron at the middle school. And Kelly Worsbicky replaces Petricella as the full-time nurse at Gibbs.
Okay. Great. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Can we get roll call, please? Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Kaminsky?
Yes.
Ms. McSweeney?
Yes.
Ms. O'Grady?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Vice President Gomez?
Yes.
President Andrews?
Yes.
All right. Finance Committee, Judith McSweeney.
I seek approval for F one sixty-one, F thirty-eight. A very special thank you for F thirty-nine and F forty, which you know this, F forty-one, F forty-two, F forty-three, F forty-four, F forty-five, and F forty-six.
Can we get a second? Seconded by Heather Gomez. All in favor? I oppose. Motion passes, I'm sorry, questions or comments?
Now, this is after.
Okay. Then motion passes eight zero. Go ahead.
Because there's some logistical issues. There were a pile of policies, I've had a policy, that were tending with Michael. So when the dust settles, you want to make a meeting, give me a.
I have.
That was perfect for what I was about to say, liaison board committee reports. You started it off for me, Joe. So we're going to have a committee meeting soon, right? Okay. So any other liaison board committee reports?
Okay. Good news and bad news. The first county meeting is on September 29th. There is a conflict that night. So if you don't go to one, please go to the other. The next meeting after that will be November 14th. Probably, this first one's at the Clinton Inn, but it's also virtual. Let's see, workshops coming up in October. Let's see what else here. There's legislation, they're bouncing around the, how we approach the racial history. There's a big push. Some districts are very lax in teaching civics. Something that, in this climate today, is probably one of the most vital topics that you need to discuss. They're talking for more funding for that, where that goes, it's an election year, you never know. Mass mandate they talked about. They're still talking about refunding the, I think it was S four, the Fair Funding Act. Murphy's opponent is saying he's got this big grandiose plan, but he hasn't come out with it. So nobody knows. There's a big unknown there. The other thing they're discussing is equity in schools, which has been around for a while. And finally, something that when your dust settles, I'll revisit with you is the non-college bound learner. And that's a big, on a personal note, thank you all of you who reached out to me during my crisis. I'm laying in ICU, trying to figure out how I'm going to make the meeting on the tech. So they call that the sugar.
Oh, we're glad to have you back.
Anyway, it's not like me to miss meetings.
Make it August 10th.
I thank everybody.
So could you just repeat the date for me of the second, November 14th? Thank you, Stephanie Maddick.
November 14th is the second Bergen County meeting. I have established, the 29th was shot, and don't, you did register everybody for workshop. Yeah. So workshop is virtual. And I got a call from Dr. Feinside, who's the executive director, which was really nice. And I said, you really called this one right, because nobody would want to go down to Atlantic. See, he took a lot of heat initially, he said. So I also have a board of directors meeting on the 29th, which I'm the alternate, so I can sort of slide. But anyway, and on a personal note, and I was telling pages, I had a nice back and forth with Dan Connor, our former president. The older kid is married, the older one is living with somebody. The youngest one is in a junior ROTC program, plans to go into service. So he's got his, plate is full down there, but they're doing well. Everybody's cool. They send their best.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you. And just to reiterate what Joe said about workshop, it is one of our board goals to continue to self-educate and to learn and to participate. So please, everyone, it's virtual, which makes it easier for working people. Let's try to attend as many sessions as we can. And this is a Q S A for us? Yes. It is a Q S A here, so we want to make sure that everything related to governance.
Oh, one other thing. Check your, I forget what it's called.
Yes, and if you need help, you can go online and check your points, how many credits you have. And if you need help finding it, Joe is more than happy to help.
Be glad to help. Because some of you have been to so many meetings, I'll bet you you've got your first level. And because we've been virtual, we haven't had any celebrations. And they mail it to the people. But, you know, we need that master board certification. So if everybody can do it, you can reach out to me. I'm homeless at the time. Yeah. Good.
What is a delegate assembly, Joe?
Delegate assembly is probably December.
December.
And I have.
Do you know if it's virtual this year?
What?
Do you know if it's virtual this year?
I don't think so. It'll be probably Versa County College. They haven't said anything yet, but, you know, I'll go. I'll be cleared to drive by then, so.
There are a few of us, if we could, if we have delegate assembly, we move up to the.
Yeah, that we're ready to go with you.
You may get a whole crew.
We'll figure it out.
Exactly. Okay. All right. Thank you for that, Joe. Are there any additional liaison board? Yes, Mrs. Dunn?
I just wanted to share something that I received from Patty Grant. The board trustees, the New Milford Public Library and Sculpture Affiliated of the Art Center of Northern New Jersey will host a grand opening of a sculpture garden that's outside the New Milford Library. It will be on Saturday, September 18th at 2:00 p.m. It is the only library sculpture garden in Bergen County and perhaps in the entire state. The works of five sculptors make up this display. And one of the sculptors is the late Myra Gossinger, who taught at, who actually was an art teacher at Gibbs School for many years. So she just wanted me to share that with the board. So I think it would be great for them to get a chance to even drive by, stop by. And when I take my dog for a walk and stop to look at some of the pieces.
It's really exciting to be happening in town. Thank you for sharing that.
We're not out of clothes, Charlie.
No.
We have clothes?
No.
I see Councilman Seymour here. Do you have anything to report for us?
Yes. I just, I'm so sorry since this is troubled circumstances, but on behalf of the mayor and the council of Borough, Ms. Chandler, welcome, welcome the superintendent, welcome to our district. Anything the borough can offer by way of resources to ensure your continued success, please don't hesitate to reach out. I'd just like to echo some of the earlier comments made here. I've never been prouder to be a member of New Milford than I have in this past week. Tragedy, crisis really does pull people together. Every single person in our town and our community came together and offered to help. Couldn't be more grateful to everybody townwide, including those of you here. Thank you so much for everything that you've done. Just to give you some feedback on the progress we've been making, where DPW has been working overtime. They haven't stopped. They're moving as quickly as they can to move garbage out of New Milford. They've been repositioning and moving, strategically placing dumpsters as quickly as possible in as many areas in need as possible. We understand that the need exceeds our capacity in the short term to address everyone's need. We promise we'll get to everybody. Our police department, they've had extra officers on duty, on patrol, many of you have seen them, to give residents additional peace of mind and keep residents safe. Our police officers have also been very kind, going out to areas, bringing water and other supplies. They provide additional assistance as well. For example, when the community came together, thanks in large part to the great work of Emily Totaro, Maria Demler, New Milford Mafrid, and other hardworking community leaders, the police provided an escort into some of the areas to announce on the streets, on their P A system, that supplies were there for anybody in need. So I thank all of you. And also on behalf of the mayor, I just want to reiterate, we understand that the district is recovering via. Anything that we can provide to provide assistance, we want to help. Reach out, let us know how we can help, and we'll be there. Moving along to other, I guess, scheduling items and events that we have coming up, which seems like an interesting transition considering such a heavy topic. Tomorrow, for those of you who don't know, FEMA will be in town. It will be a FEMA mobile site at Borough Hall from nine o'clock tomorrow morning until six o'clock tomorrow in the evening to answer questions that residents may have and to provide as much assistance as possible. Although we're trying to spread the word on social media, we're asking everybody to please spread the word any way that they may know how, either by word of mouth, knocking on doors, or a simple phone call or a text message. On Saturday morning, which of course is the anniversary of 9/11, at 8:30, we're going to have our 9/11 memorial at Borough Hall. Again, that's 8:30 on Saturday morning. On Sunday, which is the 12th, we're going to have our fishing derby, courtesy of the New Milford Municipal Alliance, which will be at 10 o'clock in the morning until approximately 12 noon at Har Castle Pond. And we're encouraging people to come out, participate, and have a good time and have fun. We are already in the midst of this year's county school-wide cereal box food challenge. Just to recap briefly, earlier in the year, we reached out to school districts, not just here, but around the county, and invited districts to participate in a cereal box challenge to encourage the collection of food items. And also, of course, to raise. challenge to encourage the collection of food items, and also, of course, to raise awareness of food security. September is Hunger Action Month, which makes it very apropos. I would like to say thank you, because I'm extremely proud of the fact that this district was one of the first, if not the first district to sign up. Thank you. If anybody has questions about the cereal box challenge, as the competition goes through September, please contact me. Be more than happy to help and provide additional information or answer questions. We'll also be having, for the third time, our third annual Domestic Violence Awareness Symposium in October, which is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. It will be Wednesday, October twenty-seventh. And once again, thank you, it's being hosted by our amazing district. We are so appreciative of not only your continued support, but even more importantly, your continued partnership. It is truly, again, a testament to the community that we're part of, and worth it, where we live, that we all come together on a variety of different causes to support those in need and to raise awareness as is necessary. So again, I just wanna say thank you and offer the borough support to the district. And again, the most pressing item, of course, is to get the word out that tomorrow, there will be a FEMA mobile unit in town at Borough Hall from nine o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Are there any other board liaison or committee reports? What? No, no, no. I see a comment. Additional board items? Old business? New business? All right. Now, we will open to the public, as outlined, we will open to the public for items not on the agenda. As outlined in New Milford Board of Education by law zero one six seven, each statement made made by a participant shall be limited to two minutes. Can I get a motion to open to the public? Motion by Laura O'Grady, seconded by Katie Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Do we have any questions or comments from the public? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm listening back in on the last five minutes.
No. I'm sorry, do that again. Can you, it's hard to hear you, she needs to take the minutes. Can we say it a little louder?
No problem. Name your actual, address seventy-five, Borough. So I have a question. I, I mean, I, I know this is our first time at the meeting, I just wanted to know, I, this is my eldest child, I just sent to the school in elementary, I was just wondering, would you find any chance of the curriculum being taught in the school? Like, would we be allowed, like, can you inform us on what's being taught as far as, you know, if it's ever been taught in the school?
The first place to start is with your child's teacher. What grade is your child?
Kindergarten.
Okay, so you reach out to the kindergarten teacher. My guess is that there will be some sort of parent overview. I'm also assuming that your child ha, look, your child is a little bit young, but there's usually a Google Classroom and/or a homework board in Google, where they will, are you looking for the whole year at a glance?
Yeah.
Okay, so you could ask your kindergarten teacher to take you through that, provide it to you. They, all of our teachers have the curriculum that they teach approved. I mean, they have it all in the whole district, but they're most interested in what they're teaching. They should be able to provide it to you, and if for some reason that they can't, we do have a principal and director of curriculum. So they're the best one, because then they can talk to you, show you the books, show you the resources, everything that they'll be using with your child. And at back-to-school night, which will be virtual, they will go over all of that in, you know, an hour overview. But if you want more specific things, you could ask them specifically.
I mean, I'm just wondering, I have a question, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, don't apologize.
Not to hold up any of your times, I am also new with, like, the school as far as, I saw, like, the vast amount, how, how long do you think this would go on, or do you know approximately, like?
I couldn't possibly predict, because it's all dependent upon the state's directives for us, and those directives are based on outbreaks and contagion, and the rate with which hospitals, feds are filling, et cetera. So, you know, you have a child who's too young to be vaccinated, our hope is that everybody around that child gets vaccinated. So we just follow the guidance. So especially, I would think, especially at the elementary level, the kid, the students do tend to adjust much better than the parents anticipate they will, because kids, as you know, wanna do what all the other kids are doing, and as soon as they see all the other kids have the masks on, generally, they go with it, even at the preschool level. So it's amazing how, how well they adapt. I think it's the adults who struggle, who struggle most with the mask. But we follow the guidance of the state, the Department of Health, and if there isn't guidance, then we follow the CDC. But we just, what we do is, on our website, that reopening plan is there, and any updates will be updated in the plan. And so, and we will, I will keep you abreast, so if there's a major change at the state level or the health department level, it'll be in a parent letter that I send out. Did you receive my parent letter yesterday?
No, I don't believe so.
It should be in your email. Are you on Power School?
Did you all, or she, elementary? I was on the Power School.
Oh.
But she needs to make sure she signed up for.
For the email blast. So how could, she would do that through, through your teacher?
You know, the only reason I'm asking is because unfortunately today, like, when I was picking him up, he just said, couldn't breathe. I've never heard, you know, you know, my son never wore a mask before. Preschool, he was thrown out, he didn't go, and we were virtual online.
Uh huh.
So I'm just saying it because I just feel bad, like, it was only half a day today, I don't know how he's gonna do a full day, you know? I'm just wondering, do they get breaks, do, like?
There are masks, there are mask breaks?
Yeah.
Snack breaks and lunch break.
Yeah.
So yes. And the other thing is, and I'm not sure if this is the case or not, they do have, and I don't know if your son has, a smaller mask, like a child size. So I don't know if he's wearing a mask that's too big. Child size, and sometimes twisting the side before you loop it on the ear, sometimes helps to keep it like this, so it doesn't slide up their face.
Child size.
Thank you for your comment. Do you have any other questions? Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the public? Yes, Mrs. Page? Please take, I'm sorry, please take, yeah, do that. I don't have to tell you.
Number page one thirty-six, click here. On behalf of the enemy egg, I did reach out to Mayor Petrino, because the teachers would like to do something for the families that were affected by IED. So I had asked him for a number, because I, I really had no idea. He responded that they're gathering that information now. What we wanna do is maybe put together, like, a small care package for each family, so we're just waiting on the information from the town to get across the number, so that we know where the story is. So we're gonna do that, to get the information.
Thank you, Mrs. Awesome, thank you. I'm like, I'm tearing up right now. This town is incredible, and our teachers, thank you. Thank you and thank our teachers. All right, I, I didn't seek a motion to, are there any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, at this point, can we please close? I seek a motion to close.
I'm waiting for the questions online.
Oh, I forgot they'll be online, since we're back. Do we have any online forums? Um, I thought we have one question online. Mister, our, our attorney advised us that now that we are streaming, that we should not be taking questions. Ahead of time? Ahead of time. We only take questions here. But we, but I believe we answered the one that came in online. Correct. So are we going to be taking that for a down one? Yes. Okay. And that person who's reached out to, an answer? I'm waiting for Stephanie to respond. I know, she's typing. I know, she's typing. Sorry. That's okay. Yes, I have an answer to the question. What is the question? So the question is, Judah Fisher, four sixty-seven Senate Road. Okay. And it's about why Berkeley Street School was not outfitted for air conditioners, because there was federal funding available. And the answer to that is, is there's been several pools of money that have been given, and it wasn't strictly for air conditioners and HVAC, that there was academic, and so over the summer, the district provided programs for academic and learning loss, as well as the social emotional. Obviously, Ms. O'Duskin can speak a lot better to that. But there's a third pool of money that's available, and the grant submission is due in November, and we would certainly take that into consideration. There's also many things that go into when you add air conditioners into buildings, it's the outlets, the electrical that's in each classroom, as well as a long-lasting cost on the increase in PSE and G bills that the district would have to absorb in the annual budget each year. Thank you. And now, that was you, oh, Miss, Mrs. O'Grady.
Yes, I wanted to follow up. We passed a policy, I believe it was on the last meeting, that had to do with, I think I asked about.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. O'Grady, we have to close the public first, and then you have.
Oh, I'm, I'm.
Right? Close to the public first. Okay. So I seek a motion to close to the public. Tammy Kaminsky, seconded by Joseph Steele, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Now, board member requests for additional information. Your turn, Mrs. O'Grady.
So we had, we passed a policy about, I don't know what the policy was actually called, but I asked a question, if we were going to continue to have people ask questions online. And I believe the answer was yes. So I guess I'm questioning now, if we're not doing that, if we're gonna change our policy, or am I, am I?
I need, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna need to take a look at that policy and share it with Vic, because if we adopted a policy that is, that goes against attorney's guidance, we might need to re-adopt the policy. I need to look at it. So that was an excellent question, Mrs. O'Grady. This policy was made prior to Ms. Chandler, it was made. Michael, right. Michael, and since Ms. Chandler has updated information, I guess we'll have to look at it, right? Right.
Would you like to know the name of the policy, or the number?
Sure, sure.
Okay. Is the live streaming video recordings of public meetings by the district? Would the number help you, or that?
Yes.
Okay. P zero one six eight point zero one.
And did it have two readings? Yes, it did. Okay. And it was, supposedly, fed through the attorneys. Okay. All right, I'll check it out. Any other board member requests for additional information?
Just that if we are gonna change it, and it isn't, if it isn't the policy, and we are gonna change it, then we need to give the public enough notice to know that that's gonna happen, because of how we kind of made.
Right. Absolutely. Absolutely. The other thing, too, is that public comment is public comment. Public comment really is not question and answer. So, like, tonight, I answered this mom before I waited for all the public comments. Normally, what you do is, you let everybody make your comments, I take notes, close to the public, and then respond if I can. And if I can't, I can get back to people. But submitting questions, does it really fit into public comment, because then they're seeking a response, and it's not, it's not question and answer? If you have a question, then they should call us, and we would answer their question. I think that's probably a better way to get your answer, then you don't have to wait for a board meeting, you know? Can I answer that? Yeah. So, and, and it's that a board meeting is a meeting held in public, not a public meeting. Right. So the purpose is to conduct board business. The public certainly has a place to make public comment, but as Danielle said, it's not for, of course, a, a public meeting is for correspondence. A meeting held in public is for conducting board business, and as she said, questions should be followed chain of command first. All right, I seek a motion to adjourn. Motion by Joseph Steele, seconded by Nicole Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eight zero, passes, and the meeting is over. And we have nothing for close.